We had a old fashioned type Thanksgiving dinner.
Oh, we gave Janet the excuse to put all of her cooking skills to work.
Yeah. How about yourself?
Yeah, very nice. Thank you. Yeah. I have three minutes to seven and we we have a sufficient quorum. So as soon as we hit seven o'clock, straight up, we'll begin.
Okay, sounds like a plan for me.
All right.
I am. I've been at the hospital with my dad all day, so I hadn't had a chance to do anything. I'm just coming from Silver City. So I've got to run in loads. I'm like, I gotta get my, I gotta get signed up. So y'all see, walking through loads. That's what I'm doing. We're trying to finish. Get what I had to get before it closes tonight.
Well, I think, I think this is gonna be a short meeting since we only have the one issue to discuss.
Yeah, it's been a long, long day for me. I'm like, oh, my gosh.
Well, I have seven o'clock, so let's call to order the Pittsburgh Planning Board Meeting of December the fifth, two thousand twenty-two. And I see that we have a quorum with Mr. Baker, Mr. Carney, and Ms. Alston and myself. And I think that we can proceed. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, or does anyone want to propose a modification?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Right here, second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thanks, Ray. So Alfred moved and Ray seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any dissent? No, passes. So we have one item of a new business tonight, which is the Malat rezoning, R E Z, twenty twenty-two oh-three. And I believe Ms. Phelps is going to give us a brief overview of this. Janie, are you online?
I think she's just coming in now. I think she got kicked out for a second. She should be on in just a second.
Mr. Chairman, this is Nick Robinson. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're loud and clear, Nick.
Okay, great. Yeah, while 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 Janie is getting ready to come in, I just want to introduce myself. I'm I'm a lawyer at Bradshaw Robinson Slaughter and Reiner here in Pittsburgh and here on behalf of the applicant tonight.
Very good. Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here. Sorry for the delay, everyone. These Zoom things sometimes don't come together quite as smoothly smoothly as you would like. Hello, Ms. Phelps. Janie, we're we're ready for you to give us the overview of the proposed rezoning.
Hold on. Okay.
Yeah, now we hear you.
Yeah, sorry. Um, okay. Hey, everyone. Good evening. Uh, Janie Phelps, the planner two, and the rezoning tonight is a request by Bradshaw Robinson Slaughter on behalf of Donald Parker and Rocky and Janie Christman. The property is currently zoned R-ten residential, and they're proposing to rezone it to MRCZ, which is multi-family residential conditional zoning for a handful of uses. Uh, those uses include single-family detached dwellings, duplex, duplexes, townhomes, multi-family, uh, public park recreation facility, schools for all grades, private recreation and entertainment facility, outdoor bed and breakfast, one, clubs, lodges, and banquet halls, and then all accessory uses allowed in multi-family residential zoning districts. There's, uh, say, one, two, three, four. There's five parcels, and the total is approximately a hundred and forty-seven point two seven acres. It's located off of Russet Run. The adjoining properties to the north are all residential lots, and then surrounding it is the Chatham Park PDD. So I'm briefly gonna go through everything since it is a fairly hefty document. So they submitted the rezoning application in October. Um, and the U D O was actually amended on October tenth, which included some changes to the multifamily residential district. But since they applied before that change, they're going off the zoning ordinance or the U D O and how it was written and adopted on, uh, June thirteenth, I think was the prior one. Um, a portion of parcel seven five zero three seven, which is about forty-three point two two acres, was previously approved with a special use permit in two thousand twenty-one, uh, on December thirteenth for an age-restricted planned unit development, including single-family detached homes, townhomes, and amenities. They did have a neighborhood meeting that was held on October twentieth from five to seven P M. Two citizens attended. Uh, one, the first one that came, asked if this was for the future Chatham Parkway. And the applicant, um, who is also, uh, Withers Ravnell, and, um, I believe CPI, uh, they explained that it was for a different project. And there was another citizen that came, and they just wanted clarification on the proposal. So there are ten zoning map amendment review standards that must be addressed. The first is if there is consistency with the adopted comprehensive plan, um, the applicant gives a description. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read off these ten and then let you know if staff believes if the standards are met or if it can be met or if they haven't been met.
Sure. And I'll note, uh, before you start, Janie, I'll note that Charity Myers has joined us now.
Okay. So the first is there consistency with the adopted comprehensive plan. Uh, planning staff opinion is that the standard is met. Uh, is the proposal consistent with any provisions of this ordinance and the code of ordinances? The planning staff opinion is the standard is met. Is the rezoning required by changed conditions? Uh, the planning staff finds that this is met due to the following. The nature of this finding would be that a rezoning is required due to factors out of control of the applicant, uh, meaning that the staff initiated it, or, uh, it's a request to rezone to bring the property into conformity, something along those lines. Uh, the reason given by the applicant is further information for consideration of the request. Number four, how does this address the demonstrated community need? Uh, planning staff, that this can be met. The community, through the current effort of updating the future land use plan, as well as the board of commissioners, have identified affordable housing as a need. And staff recommends the applicant to state whether affordable housing is to be addressed with this application. Number five, is this compatible with existing and proposed uses? Surrounding subjects land and is the appropriate zoning district for the land? Uh, planning staff opinion is this is met. Would this approval result in a logical and orderly development pattern? Uh, planning staff opinion is this finding can be met. The applicant describes specific conditions for development along with a conceptual site plan. And there's mentioned the future non-residential development. Uh, conceptually, this could result in a logical and orderly development pattern. And that will be determined once detailed plans for the development are submitted. Number seven, asks if this would result in development that is adequately served by public facilities? And planning staff opinion is this is met. Number eight, would this approval result in significant adverse impacts on the natural environment? The planning staff opinion is this finding will be met until plans are submitted for review. This is undetermined. Um, it's the responsibility of the applicant or and or developer to abide by all regulations for the development. Uh, number nine, would this approval affect the property values in the area? The staff opinion is this is met. And number ten, would this be consistent with the public interest and the purpose of this ordinance? Planning staff opinion is this can be met. The community and board of commissioners have shared concerns of seeking more affordable housing. The applicant states that this will increase housing choices, which is interpreted as different housing structures, with no mention of the affordability of the structures. The applicant has some requested conditions and waivers. So I have those all listed out. Um, did anyone looking at the file, did you have any questions about any of these conditions or waivers that they have? There's, um, how many are there? Nine?
Do the board members have any questions about these requested waivers?
I did not.
I'd like to hear the applicant speak a bit more to the the affordable housing question because I know that is a high priority of the board commissioners.
Okay. And the applicant is here, and they do have, um, a brief presentation as well. So I talked with them earlier. I'll finish my over, like, staff overview, and then, um, I'll let them share the screen so they can talk what they want to talk about.
Thanks, Janie.
Yeah. So let me see. There were a few, there were a couple of changes. So they submitted a slightly amended application. And it was just changing in one of the conditions. Let me pull it up on my email real quick. So in their conditions.
And Janie, not to cut you off, I just stopped sharing. So if there's something you want to share, you can go ahead and it won't.
Oh, no, that's okay. I'll just read. It's in the packet as well in the in the submitted application.
Okay.
So, uh, for the recreation requirements, this is one of their conditions that they proposed um, on page two of their application. Uh, they added in for the recreation requirements that they will be satisfied by providing one thirty-third an acre per dwelling unit in the form of public park land dedication, constructed greenway, and or multi-use path. Um, and it continues on, uh, to the extent that there would be a payment in lieu if that's not done. And then they also, um, stated that if it's not on the property, that it may be located on the subject property or within one, a one-mile boundary of the subject property. One of the, uh, staff recommendations, which you'll see in the conditions, is to uh, decrease that to a half a mile boundary of the subject property. And that's because, uh, based on some walkability studies, um, a half a mile is generally considered walkable. Um, a mile may be too far. So that's a staff recommendation to instead do it as a one-mile, be a half-mile boundary. And then they also added in the typical street sections, and those are the, um, exhibit. I believe that's what they have it in the application as. So it just shows where the planes would be and, um, potential on-street parking. Uh, they also did a couple of amendments to the table of uses that they included. And I believe that was to include the public park or recreation facility in, uh, all of the districts and then the private recreation and entertainment facility for outdoor and all of the, uh, table of uses as well. So that, um, that is all I have. Did you have any questions for me before we turn it over to the applicant?
Board members, any questions for, uh, Ms. Phelps before we hear from the applicants?
I don't.
Then, uh, go ahead, Ray.
You call on Ray or Carl? I missed you.
Oh, hi, Carl. Welcome. I didn't see your name pop up there.
Yeah.
Hello and welcome. Noting that Colonel Schaper has now joined the meeting.
A question for Janie. Uh, is it, is it sort of a procedural? I was just a little confused by, by the term conditional rezoning. When it says all accessory uses, uh, uses allowed in the M R district would be allowed. Uh, what makes it conditional then if we're allowing all the uses?
So that's just the accessory uses, um, which they're just, I guess, covering themselves, uh, in case there's some confusion. They can probably explain better, but as far as the staff side, uh, someone can do that. Um, if someone's applying for a conditional zoning, they can say they wanna zone it to be all of these uses in this zoning district except A, B, and C. Um, same with the accessory that they wanted to do. They just wanted to clarify that they, that accessory uses would also be allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else before we hear from the applicants? Mr. Robinson, are you speaking to the applicants tonight?
Uh, yes. Hi, this is Nick. Um, can y'all hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, great. Um, let me set up this PowerPoint, um, presentation here real quickly. Oops. There you go. Okay. Okay. There you go. Can you see that, uh, light? Okay, great, great. Thanks so much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Nick Robinson. I practice law here in Pittsburgh at Bradshaw Robinson Slaughter and Reiner, as Janie mentioned. And, uh, delighted to be here tonight on behalf of, um, the applicant, fifteen five oh one East LLC for this conditional zoning request. And, um, I am here tonight with Robbie Oldham, uh, from Withers and Ravinell, who is the land planner and and project engineer. And we're not gonna take up too much of your time because Janie has done an excellent job of, um, covering the application and the issues. And and, um, in addition to that, uh, with, uh, folks from fifteen five oh one east, we've been working very closely with Janie. Uh, prior to, during and after the, um, filing of the application, uh, to get this thing in in just the right, uh, form. So I think a lot of work has gone into it since, um, since we started, and we're at, we're at a pretty good place right now. Um, the things that we would want to go over are just listed here very briefly. Uh, the staff presentation, uh, Janie's already handled. I'm just gonna do a very, very quick legal overview of the context of the request. And then I'll turn it over to Robbie Oldham to give you all a brief review of the, um, site plan and the, um, the the sort of physical, uh, context of it. And, um, a brief slide about the proposed conditions and then, um, our conclusion. And and I'll be happy to answer any questions at that point as well. And, um, if I don't cover a question that's come up so far, uh, before I conclude, please, please remind me. And, uh, we'll cover anything you'd like for us to cover. And with the ultimate goal being, um, hopefully for you all to to, uh, get comfortable and, um, make a recommendation of approval of the recor, uh, proposed rezoning and and adopt a consistency statement tonight. So the general legal overview, um, is, uh, what Janie already mentioned. The the land in this application is currently zoned R-ten, meaning it would have minimum ten thousand square foot sized lots in it. Uh, the proposed rezoning is to rezone it to MRCZ, which is just conditional zoning with four separate sections. And I'll show you the site plan in just a second about that. But in general, um, the the zoning would allow for smaller residential lots, lot clustering and and some additional uses. Um, under the U D O section ten point two, it's it's the role of the planning board, as I'm sure you all know, uh, to review and recommend to the town board regarding approval of our request. And then in general, there, the ten zoning map review standards that Janie already walked you through set out in section, uh, ten point four point twelve L. And in addition to what, um, Janie mentioned, the application itself sets out in detail how the the request that we've made conforms to those ten review standards. Um, and then the last item is section ten point four point thirteen H about, which is relates to conditional zoning requests. And it focuses the planning board on the question of whether the proposed zoning map amendment, uh, is consistent with the adopted Town of Pittsburgh Land Use Plan. Um, and planning staff agrees that that that, um, standard has been met. So I think we're in good shape there, but happy to discuss it further. Um, this is the illustrative master plan, which is, I'm sure, in your packet. And, um, unless there's questions for what I've said so far, I'm gonna ask Robbie Oldham to jump in here and start sharing his screen and and walk you through the illustrative master plan in the context.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Brown. So let me share my screen. Yeah, you can. So can you see the, uh, rural land use plan?
Yes.
Okay, all right. It's not clear on my screen. So, all right, thank you. Um, so I always like to do, and this is just based on kind of past experience with the planning board, I know, and somebody goes back to Mr. Blain, but I always want a little little bit of background, a little history. Uh, so I'll try to be quick. So I'm gonna zoom out a little bit and give, this is the site, as you can see, I've just roughly highlighted here, um, that we're talking about. But as you can see, this is, I've just turned on, this is Chad County G I S. Um, so, um, I highlighted the site, but you can see the Chatham Park P D D pretty much boundary in this pinkish color here that surrounds this property on three sides. This is the Malat Track, this square here, but this is just what we're rezoning here. So you can recall that, um, this area here, that Janie referenced earlier, it's like forty and a half acres. This was a special use, um, permit that we got rezoned last year. Um, and and just to give a little background on that, I think then, I'm not sure the U D O was passed, but we we heard from some town representatives saying, hey, look, guys, you know, we're getting ready to have a U D O. We would like to build a use of U D O. That's our toolbox, and let's figure out how to how to use it. So instead of coming back and doing a, you know, a P D D or a P U D and a special use permit, why can't we use the U D O? So U D O, as you know, is of course passed. And so we looked at that, and then we came back and, uh, and said, okay, let's use the U D O. So what works, what we're trying to do here, really, uh, that is this multifamily residential. So we worked with Janie and staff, and it feels like over the last year on this. Um, and that that really gives us a mix of residential uses, and that's what we're, that's what we're looking at. Um, and I'll get into the luster site plan here real quick, but just to give you all a little background on where we're at. I mean, Grant Drive is, um, under construction. It's basically constructed up to about right here. Um, Chatham Parkway, as you know, is constructed here. The O T is proceeding with the extension of Chatham Parkway out to fifteen five oh one. And if you recall, when, uh, we were doing this rezoning last year, we were actually going to include additional area of Malat Track. But because of the Chatham Parkway alignment not being set, it was some issues and some concerns with the alignment. We pulled that, and so, uh, you know, that's the reason that we just rezoned this portion now. Um, we're hoping, again, working with town staff with Grant Drive, uh, roadway design as well as the, these subdivisions up here. This one's under construction. We're hoping this will be under construction here pretty soon. We just recently received approval on that. But this is a little unique because infrastructure is basically being extended from the west with roadways, water, sewer, um, and, um, and really reclaim water. So it's been extended from the west, and it's been extended from the south. So that's the reason, the timing now is that we're proposing this. Um, and so let me share, go to another exhibit. And that, and that's the key. I just wanted to point out that, and we're not proposing any road stuffs through the north. Uh, we're looking at holding the existing, uh, whatever buffer requirements with the U D O with the property owners to the north. So, um, you know, really utilities are gonna be extended to the property here in the in the near future. So this is the same illustre that's in your package, but what I've added um, is really the density that we're proposing. So we're saying conditions, but really it's more almost restrictions on this, but we're proposing a max units for the M R one district of two hundred and forty, six forty-six for M R two. We're proposing a town park here upon, you know, town approval, of course, of this being a park site, and then fifty-four units for the M R four district. If you'd look real quick, this is the, this is your U D O. This is the U, uh, the, uh, this is what, why that did that? This is what said loud as far as this, the, with the, with the M R district. So you've got a, a density of allowed of eight for single family, twelve townhomes, and twenty-four multi-family. So if you come back and look at what we're proposing here, we're literally proposing four point six for this M R one district, ten because we're looking at multi-family in this, uh, this area here in the middle in M R two, of course, a park site, and then a maximum four dwelling units here. So overall, we're proposing a max of six point three dwelling units or nine hundred and forty units versus, you know, not that we wouldn't max out twenty, but, you know, it would be allowed over three thousand. So I think just point now that we're not trying to come here. We're using M R district because that's what it was the fit, and that was kind of the direction from some town representatives, saying, let's use the U D O. It gives us a mix of residential units. But we've taken it, you know, a step beyond that and said, okay, we're not trying to take that and max out the units. We're, uh, you know, we're significantly significantly less than what the max would be. So I just wanted to point that out with the graphic there. So uh, seeing questions, I'd be glad, but, uh, otherwise I'll turn it back over to Nick.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Anything, uh, further by way of summation?
Uh, just a little bit. Um, okay, let me get back to my PowerPoint here. Um, there we go. Oh, hold on. Okay. Oh, Robbie, you have to stop sharing, I think.
It's up, Nick.
Oh, it is. Okay, okay, great. No, that's an old message. Okay. Great. Thanks. Thanks, Robbie. Um, so, um, a couple of things, uh, the, uh, we have proposed these conditions as, um, Janie mentioned, um, and and the staff has reviewed those. And, um, with the modifications, uh, that Janie mentioned, um, about, um, uh, in the condition number seven, um, we're, we're fine with those nine conditions, um, as, um, modified this evening. Um, Janie, I think you were going to also show the revisions to the, um, allowed uses chart, right?
Yeah, I can. I have, after your presentation and any questions, I have a couple of other things to go over. So I can, but then I can do it now.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that if if we should wind up, um, with a favorable approval, that it will be an approval of the, um, of the use chart that we included with the modified application, um, or a recommendation of approval of it. Um, and, um, yeah, so I think if, um, if the the board can get comfortable with the, uh, with everything in the application and the proposed conditions, after you have an opportunity to ask any more questions, then, um, then, um, we would certainly assert that, um, that this meets the the factors that are set out in the U D O for approval of this kind of rezoning. Um, and request that, uh, you both recommend the approval and adopt the proposed consistency statement that the staff has included in the packet, um. I do know, Mr. Chairman, and I believe it was you and or Mr. Schaefer, I think it was you, Mr. Chairman, that raised the question about the affordable housing. And I wanted to address that. So in Janie's notes where that comes up really is in in one of the factors, which is how does this proposal address a demonstrated community need? And and Janie has rightfully mentioned that one of the community needs that the board has mentioned is affordable housing. And then there are others, there are others that are mentioned in the in the land use plan. But I think that the kind of critical aspect of this is that the the UDO addresses affordable housing in section 7.2. And the the program that is included in the ordinance is a voluntary incentive based program. So if you want the incentives, i.e. more density, then you can voluntarily agree that you will include a certain amount of affordable housing in your project. This project, as Robbie mentioned, is not asking for any incentives. And so they're they're not seeking any incentives. And so they're conversely, they're not see, there isn't any need to include the affordable housing component in in this application. But it's important, I think, to note that that this comes up under the the finding about how does this address a demonstrated community need? And we're meeting other demonstrated community needs besides the affordable housing one, such as the need for a greater variety of housing types to more efficiently meet the dynamic housing needs that are spurred by the amount of growth that's happening in and around Pittsburgh, particularly with the with the Vinfast project, the Silver City mega site, and the various other things that are coming. And and I'll note that in your adopted land use plan for the town of Pittsburgh, it really addresses this pretty directly and urgently. And I'm quoting from page 85 in the land use plan where it says, "A variety of housing stock is needed to ensure the future vitality of the community." And so what this project is about is helping to take one of the steps that's going to be needed to create a variety of housing stock that's needed to ensure the future vitality of the community. It doesn't include affordable housing in this particular project. It can be included in other projects. But what this is going to include is a pretty wide array of of different types of housing. So you're going to have, as Janie mentioned, single family detached dwellings, duplex dwellings, town homes and multifamily, together with all the things that go along with that, like a community park, hopefully there in that one section. And and so we think it's pretty clear that even without without jumping into the voluntary incentive program for affordable housing, it's still going a long way towards meeting demonstrated community need. Yes, does that answer the question?
You're muted, Eric. So I'll clarify for the board, yeah, for the board too about affordable housing. You can't require developments to provide affordable housing. We have incentives to help potentially promote it. But applicants can also still say that they're going to provide affordable housing without using incentives. So we can't require them to do it, but they also don't have to use the incentives to provide affordable housing.
I have a follow up question, if that's okay. What type of dwellings are these going to be? Are they going to be like luxury apartments? Or like what? I know you're saying they're not going to be affordable, but what kind of people are they going to be serving? I guess it's my question.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Robbie jump in there and respond to that.
Yeah, I think I'm going to defer to Chuck. Smear Chuck, or it looks like he's on here.
Yeah, I'm here. So first of all, I would say too, that right now with the we have an existing zoning of R10. We have an existing zoning that allows only 10,000 square foot lots. That means that every lot in there is going to be by the standards that are in Chatham Park and affordable lots are pretty large lots. Therefore, pretty expensive homes because of the house size will be on a 10,000 square foot lot. So Mr. Robinson earlier mentioned, I think it's listed in the uses that we have a variety of housing types that are proposed. Small lot, single family is one of those. And I think the minimum lot width, I don't have that in front of me, but I think it's 30 feet wide. Is that right? So that's that's basically a 30, 35, 3,000, 3,500 square foot lot. And the house type on that is going to be much more affordable because of the lot size and the smaller square footage that'll be on that lot than on a 10,000 square foot lot. So between that and we've got the town home use also, that's going to get into smaller units that are more like 1,500, 1,700, 2,000 square feet, that is what's typically shown or included in a larger, single family lot, which is what we are, the only thing we are allowed right now. So the conditions and the proposed uses and the standards that we have and the lot dimensions and product type gets to a more affordable product type than is presently allowed with our current zoning.
Thanks very much, Chuck.
Yes, sir.
Board, board members, do you have questions for the applicant or further questions for Ms. Phelps? If not, then we'll move on to the question of land use plan consistency.
There's still some stuff that I need to address.
Okay, Janie, go right ahead.
So which I don't know if this has really happened that much before, but I did receive some comments that someone had some questions. And I did answer all of them. But I did say, I did let the person who was asking know that I would at least bring them up. They may be a little bit too high level, but it would be good for you all to think about some of this.
All right.
So they they inquired about utilities and how the board has been denying rezoning requests. Yeah, because of lack of capacity. And they asked what makes this different. And I stated that the developer is proposing to tie in to the allocation that Chatham Park has, which is why they're going to be able to develop it sooner than other properties that are that don't have that potential to tie in. They asked about the conceptual development plan and let's see, the North Village map on Chatham Park's website shows a possible one. And it shows the entire Milot Track is part of Chatham Park. And it also shows proposed development layout that is unrelated to the underlying zoning of Milot and adjacent tracks or property boundaries. They they assume that this is an extension of Chatham Park through rezoning to allow a similar high density and mix of uses. And I explained it's not an extension of Chatham Park and is not utilizing those existing regulations that Chatham Park has. And for this to be an extension of Chatham Park, the original document would need to be reopened, revised and submitted for the adjustments and go through the legislative rezoning process. They asked about the adjacent land uses and stated that the lots are large lots to the north. And those were not specifically laid out, I suppose. And I stated that in the application, there is a block for the land use information, and they included the parcels to the north and that they're residential. And I stated that this is the applicant's application and it's it's up to them to and it's our involvement to confirm that what's proposed meets regulations. They asked about the perimeter buffer and it did not indicate depth. They said that there's a lot of steep slopes. And let's see, they stated some environmental concerns about preventing runoff from the clearing and grading and the development, dust and noise from construction. And they mentioned about stormwater devices. I said, there's no specific about the buffer, but there is mention about buffers along the northern boundary. And they will follow the UDO when they come in to to develop. And our UDO gives the specifics about the depth. They also had concerns about the small setbacks. And I let them know that those setbacks are for internal to the site, not for the perimeter boundaries. They mentioned their rationale. They said it was circular or ridiculous. So they said Chatham Park was promoted as a live work play. And the developers suggested this additional development could provide housing for workers to sell or sit or Moncur, yet has no requirement that any of the housing be affordable in any sense. This person's opinion is that this location is not easier direct for commuting to Moncur since it has to go through downtown Pittsburgh to Moncur, Pittsburgh. And I explained like how I explained to you earlier that we cannot require or force developments to provide affordable housing, but we can have incentives to help promote it. They asked, even though the rezoning standards and conditions are from the UDO, as an expansion of Chatham Park and all but technicalities, the density should require that they can agree to some additional conditions, like a greater buffer perimeter buffer along the remainder of the northern property boundary. And some additional requirements currently placed on the Chatham Park PDD should be included. And I explained that those regulations only apply to the Chatham Park PDD. They can be copied into other locations if the applicant see fit. But just because the proposal is adjacent, doesn't require them to request or follow those specific regulations. Our UDO currently lacks tree cover retention requirements. And they stated that the Chatham Park's tree protection should apply as a minimum. And that this project should also be required to conform to the Chatham Park housing element. So I again suggested we can't make those requirements, but that I would mention this to the the planning board and board commissioners. Because you all are allowed to recommend changes of the proposed conditions. And you can also think about it as well and table the the application. So and then finally, they had brought up the 50 foot buffer adjacent to the perennial stream. So this is then the WS4 PA of Jordan Lake, which is the protected area. And under Jordan Lake rules, only a 50 foot buffer is required. There are parts of Chatham Park that have hundreds of draining off. But it's only for specific areas. And they wanted to, this this commenter stated that the planning board or staff should consider increasing the buffers on this. So I don't know if the applicant wants to address any of that. Or if you all want to have me go on to the conditions.
Board members, did you have a need for further explanation from Mr. Oldham or Mr. Robinson? Go ahead then, Janie.
Okay. So other conditions. And then, like I said, this is this is sort of a big project. And this is the first one that I've had to present to you all. So I'm used to something like this, the planning board maybe requesting something and tabling it. So that's up to you all, but you know, just make sure that you've looked through everything and that you're comfortable with, you know, your recommendation moving forward. But number one, for their it's a condition and a waiver. They're proposing a 30 foot street skate buffer along Chatham Parkway. They have the planting requirements. So I went through and compared it to what our UDO has. And 30 foot is more than required. The canopy tree, the four canopy trees per 100 feet is more than required. But the UDO also mentions six understory trees, which they don't mention. So that's why it's a condition and a waiver. A waiver is number two for the street tree standards. They have it kind of broken down. The UDO requirement, it's two shade or understory trees for every three dwelling units and buildings fronting the street for multifamily. And one tree per dwelling unit fronting the street for all other uses. So both proposals, depending on how the layout is, it could be lesser than or equal to the UDO requirement. The number three would be a condition for street trees being planted in an eight wide strip. So in their application, the street tree part, it's part of number two. And I put it as a condition. I kind of broke it out just because it just seemed like it made a little bit more sense is all. So the street trees only planted in an eight foot wide strip between the back curb and sidewalk or within a 10 foot area behind the sidewalk. And there's no require UDO requirement aside from buffer widths. But generally as well, there's utilities placed here. So you need to keep that in mind. Number four would be a waiver. So they're not because it's adjacent to Chatham Park and that development, they're not proposing any perimeter buffers along the western, eastern and southern boundaries. And then the buffer along the northern boundary will follow the town of Pittsburgh UDO. So the UDO requires perimeter buffers and it's not, this isn't Chatham Park proper. So they have two options. They can choose the buffer type C or D. And there's different different standards for each of those. Number five would be a condition. They they asked to develop it with high density. This is one of the changes with the multifamily district to where high density automatically applies to multifamily. And it's a little wonky in our UDO right now because it states that the board of commissioners approved the stormwater control structure. And of course, those aren't shown right now. But also you need a PE license to even review those plans. So that's something we're that we're working on and I'm fine with explaining to the board commissioners. Number six, the lot standards and setbacks, that's that attachment that they have mentioned with the different lot sizes and the different districts. Number seven is a condition that about the recreation requirements. And then they had also included those multi-use paths. And again, staff is recommending that the location of land and or constructed greenway or multi-use path be located within a half mile boundary instead of a mile boundary of the subject property. And then number eight, they have their permitted uses, which again was revised to include some of the two of the uses in all of the districts. And then number nine, typical street sections shall be shown as on exhibit one. So that's something else that had been added in, which that was, I believe, and Robbie can confirm. I believe that was pulled from Chatham Park regulations. So I know that's kind of a lot, like I said, kind of a big project. And I just really encourage the planning board to, you know, if you didn't get it, get a full overview or you had some questions about it to really consider before making a recommendation one way or the other. I think it's important to, you know, take time and make sure you ask questions that you vet it as as much as you can within the time that you have before passing it on to the board commissioners.
What do you think, board members? Do you do you have enough information for us to proceed with this? Or would you want to table it until our January meeting in order to reflect and gather more information? Any thoughts?
Um, I guess for me, I know that you've presented that your planned structures, your planned density is going to be less than what it potentially could be. But it's still really hard for me to visualize kind of what that would look like in the land. So I'm wondering if I don't even know if this is possible, if there's a way to see kind of like a rough in of where the buildings like could be or what that many. Dwellings would look like on that plot of land. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Janie, correct me here. I have, it would, it would, we have to approve the rezoning before it could be platted and um and described at the level that Charity's talking about, doesn't it?
Well, it just depends on how much uh. I mean, it's expensive to write site plans that, you know, are like eighty, ninety percent done. So that's why our U D O currently doesn't necessarily have a requirement. It says. That the applicant may provide a conceptual plan. Um, so they. They're showing stuff is going, and our U D O is at a point where um. It can somewhat be visualized, at least you can kind of see the buffers or something, but it's not a requirement for them to show all of the individual plots. But they do show, you know, the sections of what would go where in the roadways. Um, that's, I mean, a request you can ask if the developer wants to, but um. It is, it is time, time consuming and costly to develop it more, at least at this point.
Charity, would it be helpful if uh uh, you know, maybe uh uh Robbie or Nick just notionally. Uh, painted a picture for us of uh, you know, X number of single family homes and, you know, potentially X number of townhouses and uh. And a forty story apartment building and whatever.
Yeah, sure. I mean, surely any information would be, any more information would be helpful. I could also like kind of dive into those numbers and do some research. My own to get an idea of what the, you know, that kind of unit, that many units would look like in a building, I suppose.
Nick, did you want to jump in? I saw you on mute there.
Yeah, yeah, I did. I was going to, I was going to ask um either Robbie or Chuck really to jump in there and sort of. Um, I appreciate the question, uh, Ms. Mize, that 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 it's, it is hard to visualize when you're looking at a hundred and forty seven acres. Uh, and a hundred and forty seven acres is a lot of, a lot of land. Um, and uh, and yet, at the same time, before they can uh develop. And and spin out a uh, a site plan that would show you kind of exactly the street layout and the lot sizes and all that. They have to first get the, get the zoning that would allow it. And so that's kind of the stage that we're at now. And then when we come back later with site plan review or plat review. It'll, it'll show more of that detail. But I think um, Mr. Braun, you asked about sort of more of a um. Uh, a sort of conceptual.
Yeah, so just a, just a notion of description, yeah.
And so I let Robbie or Chuck, whichever one of you wants to jump in there and and sort of paint the picture a little bit more than just the. Square boxes on the hundred and forty seven acre tract in the site plan. That would probably be helpful to the board.
Yeah, well, again, I'll defer to Chuck on that.
Chuck, you want to jump in?
Sure, and I'll even turn on my camera here.
Oh, yeah, good to see your handsome face.
Luckily, a face is more trustworthy than less trustworthy. But I guess we'll, we'll find out. Um, first of all. Uh, one, one point I would add to to Mr. Robinson's answer to you, Ms. Mize. The uh, in a number of situations that we've been in, when we, when we show drawings. You start getting into a question of i- is this a condition? And is the, once you show a drawing and you change from that drawing. Then we have, we have gotten in trouble in the past. Because we showed you something that was not exactly the way it ended up being in the site plan or the subdivision plan that was submitted. So we have to be careful with that. Um, so that's why we deal with this, and I think Mr. Braun used the word notionally, but conceptually. Um, when you, when you have two roads like we got with Chatham Parkway and with Grant Drive intersecting. That tells you usually because of the amount of traffic at that intersection, there's more traffic. Um, and there's the, and more cars means you're usually looking at more density at a location like that. Um, because of the noise and because of all that activity, you would typically see. More non-residential uses too. We haven't asked for that here because we're trying to be consistent with what is directly around that, and the non-residential uses are further to the south at Chatham Park. So with, on the east side of Chatham Parkway, we're going to be. Doing development that's that, and that's one of the reasons we, is our conditions show no buffers along those lines. We're trying to merge right into what's happening on Chatham Park land with exactly the same development. And in this case, it's going to be uh, both of those would, there wouldn't be higher density because of the, the conditions that we put limiting the number of units in those acres. And I, I don't have the, the density in front of me, but that tells you that that lot size is going to be. Somewhere in the three thousand, four thousand, five thousand square foot range. Uh, to meet that number of units on that number of acres. And so using either, and I think we've got the ability because of the stand, the street standards we included. We would be using either front loaded, uh, typical driveways on the street development. Or alleys in the rear and no, no driveways on the street. Uh, with that look of of an alley loaded product. And so those are the different because of the uses that have been proposed and the housing types that have been indicated in the. In the standards, in the charts and in the conditions. Uh, it's going to be more along those lines east of Chatham Parkway of that uh, single family detached and some townhomes. Uh, on the west side, we have more density, but it's not, I think. I guess it was tongue in cheek with a forty story.
Yes, I was teasing, of course, Chuck.
Yes, we, we, we won't have any, I don't, uh, nothing is envisioned above three or four stories. Uh, because of the cost of construction, once you go above, uh, you, you get into, you, you leave stick built. Construction going into steel construction when you have taller than four story buildings that are required from building code. Uh, so we, but we do have, I, I don't know that they're going to be apartments. We're going to have, without you looking, you know, Robbie showed. A larger area around the site, but immediately south of this. Uh, if, if you look at the Chatham Parkway North Village or the Chatham Park North Village Plan, most of our density is along Chatham Parkway with. Uh, nine hundred, a thousand, twelve hundred apartments uh, along that. Area because of the uh inclusion of transit that would, would occur there. Uh, and the, and the uh adjacency to the non-residential restaurants. Uh, shops, breweries, that sort of thing. So. Uh, that's good, that's happening south, so that the density. Unit types are projected to be condos, not apartments. And smaller units, again, getting into more affordability because of smaller. House or dwelling unit sizes. Um, and and I think in the drawing, it uh, it it alludes to the areas. Where we've, uh, because of the number of units that we've got. That that density would occur, would occur near Chatham Parkway and west of uh, Chatham Parkway. Now, related to there, if I can address some of the other questions that came up and I'm. Without having gotten a copy of that, they sound a lot like Ms. Cullington. Uh, get providing those questions. Um, and. The, a couple of things related to perimeter buffers on the north. Your U D O, which you have adopted. States what the buffer requirements should be for, for various lot sizes and unit and, and unit types. And you consider that to be appropriate. Um, if it wasn't, you would have gone with, you would have adopted a larger buffer type. So whatever type unit dwelling unit, if we put a smaller lot or a larger lot, the buffer will be consistent with what's required on your U D O to. Uh, adequately protect the adjacent property under. Um, the stream that goes through the site, and Robbie can speak to this better than I can, I think, but it's an intermittent stream is um. And so the fifty foot buffer, that's why there's been a fifty foot buffer that was approved as part of the last rezoning. We're being consistent with that. Um, as opposed to it being perennial. So. Uh, a couple of other things that you may not be aware of. One, on the western side of that stream where we talk about one of the uses as being allowed as a school. This is a site that we have proposed to Chatham County Schools. It was in the paper. That they are going to locate a school in the North Village. We have proposed this site Monday night. Next week, they will be voting on whether to accept this site or not. Uh, for a public school in that location. So the live work play, I mean, we've got, we're, we're showing a park, we're showing a school. Uh, we think that's going to become part of the fabric of the ne- of the neighborhood. That's an important part of this. Um, there's, but that's a county consideration, not a town consideration, but we'll find out about that next week. The, let's see. In turn, I think there was a comment about traffic coming up Pittsburgh or Moncur, Pittsburgh Road that would go through town to get to the site. By the time this site is developed, when you go through the normal processes of development. Uh, if you know anything about the schedule for Chatham Parkway, Chatham Parkway will be built to Grant Drive, allowing that traffic. Uh, to be getting to our site in other ways beyond going through downtown to get there. So you don't have to bypass you, we have to go through Chatham Park. Once houses actually start coming out of the ground. Here and getting there from sixty four and other places to the south rather than having to dri- to drive through um downtown. And such. Ms. Phillips got into some of the, and I, I don't know if you've really been able to. Absorb the detail of the conditions. We, we, the only purpose of the conditions. Has been to try to seamlessly be able to move from the Malot property into the Chatham Park property and back and forth with what with trees. Planting standards, with street standards, with sidewalk standards, those sorts of things, so that it doesn't look like you're. Trent traveling from one jurisdiction to another or from one project to another, so that. Uh, that because they are literally going to, as, as we, as we did previously with the west side of the Malot property within the. Encore project that is presently uh, under development right now. We had Chatham Parkway land against Malot land. That streets were moving into, uh, again, planting standards were part of. And we were trying to, again, be consistent as much as we could with adjacent development. So that's the intent of the conditions, and I. I probably, probably covered more things than you might have wanted me to, but. Uh, I hope that got your question answered, Ms. Mize.
Yeah, I did. And just following up, um, what you were talking about with the school and. Um, what's the walkability and bikeability like of this plot of land in relation to other? Like shopping centers in North Village, um, greenways, that kind of thing.
Well, along, if I think in the streets, if you look at the street standards closely that we included along Grant Drive, we've got bike lane. This is one road that. Uh, we've got bike lanes within the street, but we've also got a multi-use, a ten foot wide. Robbie, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't have those standards in front of me. We've got a ten foot wide. Multi-use trail along that road as well. Uh, for improved walkability to connecting the school, the park and the neighborhood. So I think, again, we, we've committed to complete streets. Uh, in Chatham Park, and we're with the standards that we've proposed, the conditions that we propose, we continue those complete street. Concepts through the Malot property as well. I think it's going to be walkable and bikeable.
I would just say, I would just add to that, Chuck and and Ms. Mize, uh, we are proposing, of course, sidewalk on both sides of all the streets. I mean, that's a requirement, as you know, but. Grant Drive will have a ten foot multi-use path on the north side. Uh, and the neat thing is actually is, you know, with Chatham Parkway and with recent. You know, four years ago, I don't think D O T was looking at proposing multi-use paths, but they're proposing a ten foot multi-use path on both sides of Chatham Parkway. Uh, so we will have a maintain a ten foot connection, really all the way from Mosaic. I mean, so you're talking about walkability, and Chuck and I, we've actually walked a lot of this, and we're proud of this, but. We will have a ten foot multi-use. Or greenway path, I like for Mosaic uh, to the development to the west of here, and then it will continue along uh, ten foot multi-use along Grant Drive. And get to Chatham Parkway, of course, with that ten foot that I just mentioned by D O T. We're also looking at some, trying to integrate some additional greenway into that, that we're still working on, but. Um, so yeah, we, it will be walkable, bikeable. Um, and we do have two uh, bike lanes within Grant Drive that are being constructed now.
And you may not be aware of this too, but the primary transit. But within our transit plan of Chatham Park, the primary transit line runs up Chatham Parkway and then turns west. Along Grant. So uh, we've been working with the Chatham Transit. Uh, staff, keeping them informed of our development. They've keep that, they've been keeping us informed of their plans so that we're continually. Uh, working with each other, making sure that not only walking and biking, but also transit's going to occur when, at that point in time, when they're really getting more robust with that system.
Any other questions from the board?
I had just.
I got one for.
Go ahead, Ray.
Yeah.
Um, for Janie. They, when I look down Grant Drive and see the topography in there. How can we guarantee other people that live on the outskirts that they're not going to be affected by drainage? Is that something that the planning department looks at closely? The topography of all that land and what's going to be happening?
Well, that would be um, more of an erosion and control review and possibly some of engineering for stormwater. So that's something that they ensure in their review is that there won't be a runoff onto adjacent properties and onto the roads.
So that has been covered?
No, it hasn't been covered yet. Um, like, you know, we have to T R C, so whenever they do submit some more, if, if everything goes through and it's approved. And they submit some more detailed plans, we can put them through that T R C process, and then they can get those preliminary comments from all of the staff prior to. Actually submitting developing.
But that will come before us, right? That's, once we approve this zoning change, is that going to come back to us?
Well, they'll have, they'll have to plaque this out, Ray, and then, again, the course of uh, uh, grading and preparing the sites that will be dealing with erosion and flood control and so forth, but. Those are steps that'll come back to us when we uh, I would presume uh, approve the uh, the plating of the rezoned parcels.
Yeah, because it's a lot to go through a major subdivision rezoning later on.
Yeah, I just been hit by a couple of people in the past about the.
Yeah.
In the water runoffs. I just want to make sure that it's going to be taken care of and handled correctly.
No, that's, it's a very good question, and uh, and uh, one that I, I, I think we can e- examine in detail a little bit further, further on. So uh, we come to, go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, uh, where this is located is basically within the center of that, that Chatham Park map. So I, I see no problem with it. I just want to make sure that the other people that are affected by this are protected.
Right, of course. Very good question. So we come to the point where we can entertain a, a motion from the board to either approve or deny. The uh, consistency of sta- statement for this uh, conditional zoning. Or we can entertain a uh, motion to table this to. Our next meeting, if you feel that you need to do. Further research or uh, uh, gain uh, more, more, more knowledge on any aspect of this before we uh, uh, do put this to a, a vote for um. Advancing this to the uh, the uh, board of uh, the town board of commissioners. Do I, uh, do I hear a motion uh, on any one of those uh, three uh? Conditions?
Uh, Carl here, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this has been a lot for me to digest. Uh, as has been indicated tonight, and I haven't had to pack it but a couple of days. Uh, therefore, I'm going to move that we table uh, this application to the subsequent meeting. Uh, and make it incumbent on, on, on all the board uh, to either get up with Janie and or other staff as needed. Can you all hear me? It seems like I keep getting muted.
Yeah, you were muted a minute ago.
Okay, uh, I moved, I moved to table, and I was, I was adding justification to that, but the. I'll just, I'll just stop with the motion to table till the subsequent meeting.
Do I hear a second to uh, Mr. Schaefer's motion? A second to uh, table? If not, then do I hear a uh, motion to uh, approve the land use plan consistency statement? Board members?
Why don't we just table it to uh, to January?
You want to table it, Alfredo? Are you seconding Carl's motion?
That's, I'll second it. We'll table it to January.
All right. So we have Carl Schaefer uh, uh, moving and Alfredo Alston uh, seconding a motion to. Uh, table this until the January meeting in order that. uh, table this until the January meeting in order that we undertake, uh, further information gathering. And, um, as Carl said, uh, everyone on the board, uh, that needs and wants more information, it's incumbent upon you get with the planning department with, uh, Ms. Phelps and, uh, and, uh, get your, get your questions, uh, answered in, uh, detail.
And Eric, if you don't mind, I'd like to follow up on one of Ray's comments a little bit more in detail about the stormwater, uh.
Yes.
I, 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 I walk and ride my bike through, through Chatham Park, uh, a lot lately and, and I'm very impressed with, uh, with, with the walkways, the bikeways, et cetera. I'm also impressed with the design and construction of the stormwater detention facilities. But what I'm not impressed with and very concerned about is the operation of those. Uh, for example, uh, a stormwater detention pond is designed to hold stormwater, uh, allowing it to acquiesce and settle some of the suspended solids. And when those valves are left open constantly, which they are, and I've reported this to the erosion sediment control people, I've said it at meetings here in the past, but I'm not sure if the right people have heard it. Uh, and there's some kind of disconnect between what's required, what's designed and what's operated. So I think we really need to, uh, this is not our role. We are not the erosion control officers, but, uh, you know, Bill has heard it, Ray has heard it, I have heard it, I have seen it. Uh, someone needs to get, I think, a handle on, on how these facilities are being maintained because I can tell you they are not. And I've been versed in this, uh, science for thirty years. Uh, I don't know if Robbie checks them with any kind of frequency, but, uh, when those valves are left open and uh, very turbid water is being discharged to our surface waters and there's no water stored in the facilities, uh, something, something's gone wrong there. So I'll just let that go with that. That was not necessarily relevant to the discussion of the tabling motion, but since, since Ray brought it up, I wanted to bring that up as well.
Robbie, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. We'll look into that, but I have a feeling that those devices have not been converted to permanent stormwater devices. Uh, we have to wait for the Chatham County, basically, uh, rush control inspectors and supervisors to tell us to convert it. Uh, we can't convert those till the pretty much the entire drainage uh, basin is built out and stabilized. So they are still acting as filter basins, you know, most likely. So, you know, they have a skimmer on, you're, you're familiar with all of this, Carl. Uh, they have a skimmer on them, so they have just, I have a feeling that they've just not been converted to a permanent stormwater device, but we'll check into that.
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't, I don't get that, but I mean, now is the critical time. Now while construction is at its heaviest and mo- most active and we have acres upon acres of denuded vegetation, this is when those structures need to be, you know, need to be, uh, functioning as designed. Uh, so.
And they are, it, it, you use them, there are two stages to it. So the first stage, you build your S E Ms for erosion control for filter basins. Uh, then you convert them. Once everything is stabilized, you basically go in there, clean them out, convert them. Then the valve is shut and then they are holding that water, uh, permanently. They're also holding water down there, down the brush control device, but uh, again, we'll talk to the county if we need to have the county, you know, provide some input on that, but I assure you they're being expect, expected on a weekly, if not seems like daily basis. So, but, uh, we will look into it and, and, and advise.
Thank you, Robbie.
Yes, sir.
All right. So we have a, a motion to, uh, table along with a second. And so, uh, I'll ask the board members to, uh, vote on this, all in favor of tabling this uh, matter until our January session in order to, uh, uh, permit, uh, further investigation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay? The ayes have it. And so unanimously, we will table this and, uh, do, uh, uh, further investigation as, uh, board members. And so, uh, Janie, prepare for a lot of questions.
Yeah. Um, also something I'm going to do because there were some minor changes that need to be done and like a highlighted version. I'll go ahead and get that updated this week and get you all a completely clean copy. So you have, so, so it just reads the complete right way. Um, but yeah, feel free to ask me whatever questions you need. And also the calendar was, well, we can do this after you finish this item. We'll just do it in miscellaneous, so.
So you'll notify the town board, this isn't coming their way immediately, that we'll, uh, do a little bit more work be- before it's, uh, s- sent, sent on for approval. Thank you very much applicants and, uh, we'll, we'll see you again, uh, in, in a month. Happy holidays to all. Janie, Molly, did you have planning, uh, department updates to share with us?
Yeah, I'll go real quick. Um, so the board of commissioners approved the calendar for the year twenty twenty-three. So our meetings are now going to be, what do we say, six o'clock, I think, right?
Right.
Still, still virtual, so, um, they'll be at like seven and the next meeting in January is on January ninth because we're, uh, our offices are closed on the second, an observance of the holiday.
Right. So our next, uh, gathering will be at, uh, six P M. Thanks very much. Anything else by way of, um, uh, news to share?
Um, as far as the land use plan, and we revised the contract slightly because we're actually um, extending by another month. So it's looking like a February timeframe. We may see it. Uh, I don't think it'll be January. It'll probably be, be February when you all see that land use plan. So we'll do what we can, uh, that we have, you know, control over essentially to try and hopefully have only that on the agenda because it's going to be a pretty large item for you all, um, for anyone really. So we'll try and just make it so that's the only item so you all can focus on that and hopefully we'll have a draft version of it earlier than a week prior to the meetings that you do have some better time. Um, because I know we've been doing pretty decent about getting the stuff to you, you know, like at least six, six or I think, um, which I hope is helpful for everyone. Um, this is kind of weird because of the holidays right now, of course. So whenever we get that, um, we'll push that out to you all as soon as possible. So that should be coming through in February, um, or maybe March.
All right. Thanks very much. Any, uh, further comments or questions from the, uh, board? If not, uh, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Alfredo, uh, moves and I believe, uh, Mr. Baker seconds.
Second.
Uh, all in favor of adjournment? Aye?
Aye. Anybody have a?
All right, we stand adjourned. Thanks very much, everyone.
Um, quick question.
Want to say something?
The, uh, for the vote, who was the nay for the tabling?
I didn't hear a nay, did I?
I didn't, I didn't hear a nay.
No, I didn't hear a nay. So it, uh, it was approved unanimously. Thanks very much, uh, so thanks very much, everybody, and happy holidays. We'll see you.
Uh, table. This is Freda.
Yeah, I heard that. I thought someone said nay for the vote. So, okay. Well, thank you.